Twenty-six, it's four-thirty-ish, we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. This is a work session, so if you have not been invited to speak during the council meetings, that's when we have public conversations, so we appreciate everybody's cooperation tonight. We're gonna roll right downhill. We will be having Mayor's Awards, number one. Number two, it's a public hearing, consideration of a general obligation loan agreement. Hold on before we get into that one. I'm just gonna, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. A public hearing, consideration of a general obligation loan agreement, a principal amount not to exceed eight million, five hundred thousand. Jim?
This is for our borrowing for the projects that were in the budget, the CIP. It covers borrowing for our general street resurfacing, one point four million. We do a miscellaneous street rehab account with a hundred and fifty thousand. Those are for just various projects that can come up during the course of the year that need done. Mount Pleasant Street, four point three-five million. That's anticipated to be funded back, or funded through TIF funds. Central Avenue Bridge Rehab, three hundred and fifty thousand, another TIF project. And then additional flood wall money, one point nine million dollars for the first phase. That ended up being more than what the original project had been anticipated to be. We knew that going in last year, that we'd have to have this additional borrowing occur this year. That's set to be paid for with sales tax funds. Those are all general obligation bond projects though, so they're backed by the full faith and credit. And those are all, that's what's incorporated in the eight and a half million dollars. We've done the background rating call with S and P. We've not received a rating back. I think they're, I don't know, the next couple of weeks we're anticipating getting a rating back. They know our schedule for actual sale isn't until the beginning of April, so they have a little bit more time to get it completed.
You guys good? Okay. Number three, public hearing, consideration of an agreement with Burlington Community School District relative to use of Dankwart and Crapo Park tennis courts. Mr. Tisland?
This is an agreement presented by the Burlington School District for use of the tennis courts at Dankwart and Crapo in exchange for a contribution of funds towards the improvement of these courts. A little background on the courts, previously we had Crapo in our five-year CIP, last year's budget, and the year budget, year before, for FY twenty-two. That was eliminated, or planned to be eliminated this year, based on budget reductions and cuts throughout the CIP. The school approached the city, talked about a contribution towards the courts for, in exchange for preferred use of the courts. They're looking at, their tennis courts needing work as well, and kind of uncertain future of their courts. And yes, we had discussion, felt it was appropriate to bring this forward, since we do not have funds to make improvements to our courts, to cover the full costs, that this would be a good partnership or shared use of that cost, and allowing for the courts to remain in quality, safe condition going forward. So that's what was brought forward and discussed, was a use agreement for the courts in exchange for a contribution of fifty thousand dollars. This would be a repair, crack repair, sand and paint net posts, acrylic resurfacer of the courts at Dankwart and Crapo. Dankwart was last done in approximately 2010. These generally have a five-to-eight, ten-year timeframe for repairs. Longer you go, more that cost increases. Generally, when you repair cracks, where you stop is where it picks up kind of the following season and continues to spread from that crack until it reaches the end of the court. Crapo was last updated, overlaid in the eighties, and this one is in great need of repair. If this isn't, Crapo's not done in the next few years, and that'll either need a total re-surface, total overhaul, or would need to be removed, so that's kind of where we're at with that. Dankwart is in need of repairs as well, so. Yes, during this process, we reviewed, staff did, with the school district, kind of what an agreement would be. That's what's in your packet right now, holding up to fourteen meets per year on the city tennis courts, having practice allowed between three-thirty and five-thirty Monday through Having the fifty thousand dollar contribution, they would have to provide their schedule for practice and meets by March first of each year. This would still allow Notre Dame to practice at the courts just after that time period, and would allow them to continue to have their meets at the courts this year and going forward in future years as well, so. Just looking at this, this is something we're kind of been contemplating with other facilities as well, these shared use agreements. We realize budgets are tight, they're gonna be tight in the foreseeable future, unknowns with backfill and other things. Parks, we understand, is not the essential services or emergency services where it's a little lower priority, so we seek outside funding sources, whether it be grants or shared use agreements or other funding sources, and this was something that was brought to us as an opportunity, and we felt it was prudent to review this and feel that it's important that we have courts that are quality and safe for the community as a whole. We realize there is some impact on area schools, West Burlington, Notre Dame, that have used these in the past. There's not been a formal agreement in the past, and there's not been a cost associated with that in the past, and our concern was timeframe and then making sure they are still allowed to use those courts, especially for tournaments. There is an inconvenience factor for practice time, but that's something that is a reality for other areas as well, where there's limitation of courts or facilities. There's no courts at Notre Dame, at West Burlington, West Burlington Parks, West Burlington Schools, so these are the courts in the community, and how do we best utilize those? How do we best utilize our resources and funds to make those available for the public as a whole, which includes all the schools as well? So we brought this forward, reviewing our conference plan, and kind of these shared use agreements, those are key points in our plan of pursuing other funding sources, making sure we're sharing resources with other agencies, other schools, especially Burlington School District, which is again, one of the other high taxing entities in our community, so. With that, if you have any questions, I can answer them. Tim Kuspke and Zach Shea, the facilities supervisor and AD for Burlington Schools are here as well, and they're the ones that we've worked with on the agreement.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any questions?
I do. Couple of things, I guess, I would ask. It concerns me that we're putting ourselves out there to the highest bidder on this agreement, because there is some priority being placed as far as the practice time. So I have a concern there. The other concern I have is, you know, I, we've discussed this with a couple of different people that have called, and I don't think we've ever asked Notre Dame for funds, is that correct?
We haven't, and we didn't ask the school district either.
Yeah, I know. And appreciate the school district coming forward. It, you know, we can work together and all use the city park, makes some sense, but there is a concern for me that we're showing a priority for one particular group at the expense of another, despite the fact that we're getting some funds to do so.
Are we okay to ask questions of people in the crowd, or? What's that now? We want to stick to the ones that have been invited, so Mr. Kuspke and Mr. Shea.
Eric, do we have, do we know, have they come to an agreement as far as the schedule for practices?
Maybe they could address that. The schedule that had been previously agreed was three-thirty to five for Burlington Schools at their courts and at Dankwart, and then Notre Dame, West Burlington after that. I know there's been some concern about that after that was initially discussed with them, but they might be able to speak to that a little bit more.
And I would also say that we do have an administrator from Notre Dame here, so it'd be only right, because of the other person involved, I think they ought to be allowed, the administrator ought to be allowed to speak to that too, please.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up here in a moment. So hello, I'm Zach Shea, I'm the AD at Burlington High School. So obviously, we're in this situation because our tennis courts are diminishing at a fast rate, and we have a long-range plan to put in a gem where those tennis courts are, so right now for us to put money into those tennis courts does not make sense. So we came to the city, I know Tim did, with Eric, and, you know, they came up with this plan, and, you know, I think that, and we're really talking about one time slot, okay? Because when, this is what I understand, when Notre Dame practices there, they practice at two different time slots. The girls or boys first, and then the girls or boys would follow. So essentially, what we're gonna do for this next year and for the foreseeable future as far as scheduling practices, Burlington would go from three-thirty to five-thirty at Dankwart and BHS. Our girls would practice at BHS, our boys would practice at Dankwart. And then Notre Dame would then come in, and I, trying to be a good neighbor, gave them the opportunity to use our facilities at BHS to practice, so then they could come in. And typically, our practices last for about an hour and a half, so you're really talking until five o'clock. They would be able to use Dankwart at five, BHS at five. So it's really that one time slot. And I broke the season down even further. So the practice, the practice can start on March twelfth, okay? The last play day that Burlington has is May eighth, okay? That's forty-one days. So then if you take away the away dates, that Burlington would be gone from the boys' schedule, that's seven dates. So then that takes you down to thirty-four practice dates that Burlington would actually be using Dankwart to practice, okay? But then our girls have five home dates, if you're following me here, so you gotta add those five dates back, all right? So that's thirty-nine dates, okay, over the course of the entire tennis season that we're talking about. One time slot at three-thirty to five-thirty at Dankwart Park. So I believe, you know, with us, you know, we're making the business decision, not a donation, to have those two time slots at Dankwart and BHS. So that's kind of our breakdown of the scheduling. Again, like I said, we would offer Notre Dame the opportunity to come practice at BHS when need, and then when Notre Dame is practiced, or has a home event, Burlington will then practice at BHS, we will not use Dankwart facilities.
Questions, Counsel? From Burlington?
How long's the, how long's the tennis season? How many days?
Well, that's forty-one days.
Forty-one days.
Now, that does not include postseason, but postseason is, you know, it's not a given that anybody's gonna go to the postseason, so I put in there what we know for exact dates.
Okay. So have you, have you had the opportunity, or have you sat down with Notre Dame and worked out an alternating schedule, or is it the schedule where yours starts at three-thirty and then runs till five?
That was, the one that is not alternating is the one that the two ADs sat down, came up with an agreement, and then that's how, that's how it was left.
Okay. And then if it wasn't, if we didn't follow through with this, are your facilities, would you still plan to continue with the facilities you have at BHS, or what would be your plan at that point?
Well, I think if the agreement was not voted upon, I mean, we would still ask to use Dankwart.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you both. Can I, can we hear from you, please?
I wasn't prepared for this.
Prepare yourself, you got about three seconds.
Okay. Controary, what?
Tell us, tell us who you are first, please.
I'm Bill Mopkin, I'm the principal at Notre Dame. We do practice all at the same time, and I talked to Pat Cohen today, and we really didn't want to bring this to this level of the city council, and I talked with him today, and we're working on an agreement on the practice. We would like to alternate weeks, simply because we have students too that have to go to work, and they need to get to work by five, and then those students would not be able to, and not just Notre Dame students, I'm talking for West Burlington too, they would not be able to participate with the tennis program. So that's what my concern is. I know that our AD, Jeremy Swink, has worked out an agreement with the tournaments and the meets, we're fine with that. The only concern I have is we're being delegated to, this is when you guys can practice, and I just think it would be fair for all concerned if we could just alternate that. So that's been our biggest problem, and our biggest concern.
So you're saying one week, you guys would go first, and the next week, BHS go first, okay? Or different facilities?
Is that what, with them paying the fifty thousand dollars though, as well?
I don't, yeah, I don't, that's up to them, but they're getting priority on the meets. The way I understood it from my AD, they schedule their meets, we work around their meets. They're getting that priority. They use it on the weekends for some tournaments, I understand, Notre Dame does not. I'm just looking at, and also another thing is, Wednesday nights, our kids would not be able to, because we have, practices have to be done and over with at a certain time for church night.
And I hear where you're coming from, I understand what you're saying. My only question is, you're looking for equal access, but they are, they are paying the bill on getting all the work done, so.
We're looking for a fair practice schedule, not for their meets, if they, my AD has said he'll schedule around the meets.
Bill, do you feel like Notre Dame would be willing to work, to provide any level of funding as well to go toward the facilities?
We've been talking about that, and Jeremy has, our schedule is already set for next year, our budget. You know, we're at a certain point where this year, if you say, we need this much money, we would have to fundraise to do it.
I really am comfortable with that. As far as Notre Dame, one, it's a smaller school, and two, it's, they're paying property tax, just like everybody else.
No, and I understand, I mean, I'm.
Right. So I, you know.
I just wanted to ask the question, because.
Do you pay property tax?
Their parents do.
No, their parents.
Absolutely. So I, you know, I have, I have, I just, I guess I have, I appreciate, appreciate the fact that Burlington, my alma mater, came forth and said, hey, we'd like to help you with the courts, it satisfies the needs for them, but I also don't think that we as city council can just say, well, give us the money and see you guys later. So if you guys could work out an agreement, would that make it easier on us? Yep. You know, they do have the, they do have, they are getting the priority on the meets, and also they can have the access on Saturdays, you know, that, I, you know, I have a little bit of a problem where we're at right now.
Better to.
I think at this point, I just, I would like to see you guys work out some agreement where everybody agrees. I'm in the same boat, I'm not gonna be up for accepting funds and then providing any level of priority to anybody, whether they're public or private, for any public good or service or entity that we have. Now, that can change, but it just, at this point in time, that's kind of where I sit. If Randy Weingard were to come forward today and say, I'll give you five hundred thousand dollars, but I want to have Flynn Hills Golf Course every Saturday and Sunday, the answer's no. Whether, even though we could use the money, I'm not gonna take a public service or good and set it aside for anybody.
Again, this is Burlington, and everybody in Burlington should be able to play tennis. I can't, but, yeah, that's, anybody else have anything they can add on that?
Now, that being said, we have two schools that want to use the courts, so regardless, we're gonna have to come up with an agreement where everybody can use the courts equally, of whether funds are received or not. So that's something, you guys are gonna have to work that out, in order to make that happen.
Were you gonna say, were you gonna say something down here? Did I miss you? Okay. Everybody's good?
I think we need to talk a little bit about making arrangements for use of facilities for payment. We do that, you want to talk about some of the different arrangements we have?
Well, we have arrangements for practice soccer club at the Recplex. We've been talking to them on use of our facilities there as well, increasing that cost for their preferred use of practice time on the back three courts on a Monday through Thursday basis. And these are things we're looking at, we know the Recplex is losing money every year, we know parks are not getting funded to the level that need to keep up the facilities, so where are we at as far as seeking those or promoting those or bringing those forward, so that we don't have the large deficit at the Recplex, or we are able to keep our facilities funded? With the tennis courts, I understand the discussion, but if we do not complete these, that cost is gonna go up every year, and in two or three years, Crapo courts are gonna go away if we do not do something with them. So we realize parks are not gonna have the funds, that's, we're not disputing that as far as priority over essential services and everything else, so we're trying to be creative and look for outside shared agreements, whether it's with the schools, or Notre Dame, or West Burlington, or different agencies, the soccer club, golf as well. We have tournaments that shut down the course for an entire day, because we're guaranteed to have revenue and income for that weekend, where public cannot play during that time, because we have a tournament, and we have tournaments quite a bit more now than we did in the past, which guarantees us revenue for those weekends, and that's something that we know is a priority for council, of creating that revenue so that we're not having these deficit accounts at the golf course, or the Recplex, or parks in general, so.
And just for the record, I'm not mad at you personally.
So we just want to know where we should go with these things and how to bring them forward, and.
And I think that's the right, that's the right path to go down, Eric, is try to come up with some type of fee structure, and I hope that, my hope at this point is that the two schools can come up with an agreement that both of them are on board with, and that we can continue down this path and get the courts taken care of, and everybody's happy. But if we've got a public, public park, I don't want to set it aside for any one entity for an extended period of time.
We've done the same with the swimming pool, we just gave a nine-month agreement.
Yeah, but when the pool wouldn't have been open during those nine months.
And we also gave them priority for all swim lessons, we gave that service to them as well. So we do these type of arrangements, that's, you may not want to do this one specifically because of the interactions between the school districts and what's going on, but these are very much within the line of what our parks has had to happen in the past.
Hey, well, don't get me wrong, I'm very appreciative of the, you know, I know you guys are scrambling on the staff, that's great, my guess, my biggest issue is, we're kicking one group out to put another group in, because one group was already using it at that time. Now, because we have some money being kicked in, we're, well, sorry, but we're gonna move you around, and I don't, you know, it would be, to me, it's different if it was, okay, the courts weren't open, now all of a sudden they both came to us and said, hey, we want to use them. But you've got a long-term deal where they've used that court, and it's kind of like when we said about closing for a golf tournament, you're not gonna kick one golf tournament out for another golf tournament on the same day. Typically, there's, there's been some established priorities there, so.
Patrick, what's your, I want to hear from the city.
I just wanted to point out to the council, in case, the fine print, I know is difficult to discern, but there's a provision included in the contract that requires these schools to leave two of the courts open to the general public during use, so we were cautious about that, wanted to make sure that the public still would have access, even if they had it for sustained periods of time. And I think the theory discussed between Eric and myself when we were working on the contract was that the public then benefits from the fact that the district is willing to kick in these funds, upgrade these courts, and then, of course, the public can continue to use them, just as the schools do, which is part of the thinking, is to upgrade our facilities. If the district had the money and were willing to give it, it would be helpful to everybody, so.
Can you, can you state who you are too, just for?
I apologize, Patrick O'Connell, City Attorney, I'm only here because I worked on the contract and know what it says, so.
Thank you.
And he was here for a previous reason, so.
That's just my only point too, is from a parks perspective, we want these courts open to the public, and if we're not able to upgrade them, then are we gonna be able to have these open to the public in a quality, safe capacity, whether it's this year, or next year, or down the road? And that's what our goal is, regardless with the schools, we want these courts available all the other times, which is, other than these two or four hours, Monday through Friday for a month and a half or two months, and if we're not able to upgrade them this year, it's gonna cost more next year, and where are we gonna get these funds down the road?
One thing I'd say is, I almost feel like we're just probably ten months or eight months at least early on this agreement. I mean, we haven't even touched the courts yet, and we won't until late this year. I feel like, I mean, this is something that a lot of things can change between now and then. If we're able to do all the courts out there, I went out and looked, I took the opportunity, and I went to every tennis court in town, I would agree that they are the nicest, but they do need some work, but there are other courts in the community as well that aren't too far off. But at the end of the day, I think we could probably push this down a road a little bit, see what the two schools can come up with, and then approach this after the courts have been refinished, or when they've been redone, or what we're gonna do there after the tennis season, and this year, just work out an agreement to share the courts on an equal basis.
I'd like to see the, both, the school districts work something out, that's what I would love to see. Again, we're a community together, so let's find a way to make it happen. But, but again, I just want to reiterate, we're not stifling you, my friend, you're doing exactly what we want you to do, so, so know that. Okay, are we good going forward now, Counsel?
Just one other quick note on, not to belabor, to do tennis courts this fall, we'd need to enter into some agreement, probably in the next couple of months to do that, which we'd need to know we have funds to do that, just based on the timing. We have a rep coming on Monday to look at the courts, to go over what that would be, so we could start to get bids, so if we're looking at having them ready for next season, we need to know that we're gonna have funds this fall to do that this fall, otherwise we're, it's gonna be another tennis season that it's delayed, so, just as far as timing-wise.
I'd say it gives them a couple of months to work out something, and then we can tackle this again after they've had a chance to sit down and work through this.
Counsel, you guys are good?
Yep, no further questions right now?
Okay.
And, sorry, I don't, I'm sorry to keep delaying this, we don't have an agreement with either school, if they don't come to an agreement, we don't have an agreement with Notre Dame, West Burlington, we never have, other than just, yeah, you can use our courts, there's no other use. If both of them want to use our courts, and there's no agreement, or they can't come to agreement, I guess I just, we want these courts for the public, but how that is gonna function is kind of up in the air, so. Technically, they're public courts, there's no agreements, whoever gets there, I mean, I don't want to create these issues, which, these are just concerns we have as staff.
This hasn't been something that we had to look at, I mean, this has been a thirty-year arrangement that's been in place, but no, never a formal agreement in place, and I don't think that we, from a staff perspective, looked at it, or considered the fact that we didn't have a formal agreement in place. What Eric is getting at is, no one is guaranteed a court at this point.
Okay.
You don't have a formal agreement to allow anyone to formally have a spot.
We're good?
Good for now.
Eric?
I think that's it for now, I just want to make sure everyone's clear and get everything out there, so you can have those thoughts and discussions.
Appreciate the work, Eric.
And we appreciate those that came to me too.
It also points out, as we've gone through this, we've got, do we have a formal agreement out at the golf course? For the use?
At the golf course?
For the schools?
No, no.
And that's another issue that we are gonna have to come up with, as we've gone through this topic, just realized that these are things that.
Have we had issues with the golf course in the past?
No, we just don't have a formal.
We don't have a formal agreement for them to take over use of the facility.
Sounds like we've got some work to do, just to get our end caught up, or start diving into a bunch of stuff, so.
Are we good? And thank you all for coming tonight, we certainly appreciate you, and if you want to get on out of here, you're definitely welcome to do that, just. Which brings us to number four, as a consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property, locally known as three thirty-three Curran Street, from our two single-family residential, to see one limited commercial zoning district, it's gonna be the first reading on that one. Mr. Tisland?
Just went to the planning commission on January sixteenth, and was recommended to the city council four to one to recommend approval of the requested rezoning. The recommendation was based on the desired use of the property for limited commercial, location adjacent to existing arterial and collector roadways, and nearby surrounding neighborhood mixed uses. There is a hair salon just one block over, a church to the east, and other commercial uses, gas station, along, turned off, along agency, there is a large open area to the north that could be considered commercial in the future, I think a church owns it now, but generally, these areas, these prime corner areas are considered for commercial use. It currently is low-density residential on the future land use map, as are the other commercial areas. We would recommend changing that to a neighborhood mixed use, which allows low-density commercial uses. The no vote from the planning commission was based on, they just didn't have a formal use at this time for the site. The owner was.
The owner wants to market it as a commercial site, and then access, which would be during the site plan review, if this was rezoned, and they submitted something, we'd have control over access through the site plan process, making sure they had proper access, whether they upgrade the alley entrance or something else, as well as off-street parking adequate to what the site is. So if it is rezoned, any use at the site does still have to meet all our current zoning code items, which include setback, parking, access, architectural design, buffering between residential uses. So those are handled through our zoning process, but staff felt this was an appropriate rezoning request, and was recommended by the planning commission.
Questions for Mr. Tisland?
Is that, is that, is that just a house and a garage on there now?
Currently, currently, there is a house and a garage. They have gotten their demo permit to remove that, which will be a good process. It has been an ongoing nuisance property for quite some time. It had been sold on contract, and the contract seller recently repossessed and got the property back, and he is demolishing the structure, which will take care of quite a bit of our nuisance time, luckily, so that'll be a good improvement for that area.
So did I hear you right, there's nothing specifically listed to go in there, they just want to be able to market it?
Yep, yep.
And we've touched base with all the homeowners to the south of that?
We should notice everyone within 200 feet, yep, yep.
Good? I'm good. Good? Number five is a consideration of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to the standard penalty applicable to certain sections of the code, and violations thereof, just reading on that.
Before you go to that, back on yours, Eric, staff doesn't recommend the change that is.
Does, I'm sorry.
Does.
Yeah. Sorry if I said that wrong.
On number three, on number four.
I just wanted to make sure.
You said planning commission doesn't, because.
Planning commission does. Four to one does approve. The one no vote was based on their concern that they didn't have a plan. But the four that voted in favor of it were supportive of it.
Yeah, I think he misspoke and said doesn't, but his phone, when his computer blew up, understandable, so.
Big chief.
Yeah, just briefly, we, we had kind of talked about this in the past with the engine and defense bill, and we had removed imprisonment from the simple misdemeanor section. Well, in essence, at least locally, or how that's viewed locally is, is those all would become municipal infractions, which really complicates the system for us. So in getting with Patrick and working our way through this, we're going to add the imprisonment back in, but the more important part is the sentence at the end. However, any award of imprisonment under this section shall be imposed only upon this express request of the city's prosecutor representative. So what we're saying there is, is if, if there's going to be imprisonment, and if you have to have defense, then what we're going to do, or what the county attorney has talked to us about doing, is just amending that to a state code, essentially, and then that changes the burden. But trying to get these cases prosecuted, the, like I said, just locally, this has worked in other counties, but, but locally, it was kind of a problem. So rather than do that, this, this will take care of our needs, and then some. It was going to get kind of complicated if it stayed a municipal infraction. So it's, we're really just adding a sentence back to the ordinance.
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Thank you. Your honor? Yes, sir.
Can I count on that briefly?
Please do.
The, the code, our, Lynch Dallas is responsible for this fiasco. Essentially, I talked with the city manager, and he had the same concerns I did. The League of Cities also pointed it out. The reason why we had to make these changes initially is because we were going to get tagged with paying criminal defense costs on all these city tickets we were writing. We didn't want to do that, so we took out the possibility of jail time. The rest of our code, but it was only on certain offenses, and the language still existed, that all of the offenses that the county attorney was being asked to prosecute for us, that she had criminal cog over, were still characterized as criminal violations. But she didn't see it that way. When I discussed it with her, she saw it differently. So we, I'll take full responsibility. I mean, we were just trying to protect the city, and it's worked every place else that I'm aware of. I've even talked to several city managers elsewhere, and they're not having any issues. But our city, our county attorney did have some issues. She didn't feel that she was legally allowed to prosecute those because they were characterized, or some of them were anyway, as municipal infractions. I pointed out the language elsewhere in the code that said only some of these are going to be considered municipal infractions. Most of the things she's prosecuting are still defined exactly the same way. She didn't like that, so what we did was, we just went back, as the chief explained, and just added one sentence that says, no jail time unless we ask for it. There's still a risk that the judge would say, well, it's my call. And they might still appoint a prosecutor, or a defense lawyer, and you might still have to pay for it, so.
Hey, we'll take that, though. We'll take that.
I do apologize, we were just trying to do the right thing, save everybody money.
Apologies needed there. You guys have questions?
Good. Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you, Patrick, for the clarification. Next, we have number six. A consideration of 2018 amendment to urban renewal plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area related to use of incremental property tax revenues for public improvements.
So a couple of steps that go along the way of adding projects to be funded with TIF funds. We had to have a meeting, a combined meeting with, where we had at least provided invitations to the county and the school to hear what projects we're looking at potentially funding with TIF dollars. The school district did make it to that meeting. The projects that are being added that were not previously already included in our urban renewal plan included the Central Avenue Bridge repairs for 350,000, doing the adaptive signalization on Roosevelt, and then Broadway extension out, out by the, adjacent to the recplex. The final two of those projects are on next year's CIP plan. They are not on this year's, but we're getting them added now at the same time while we're doing this amendment process. We anticipate if we're moving forward with those projects, it would be next year's financing, next March, where we'd be doing the borrowings on those. But this urban renewal amendment, if approved by the council, would add the ability to fund those, the three projects with TIF funds.
Questions? We're not funding it with any other funds.
No, we don't have other funds to do it.
We have no fundage.
That's right. You guys good?
What would that put our TIF max at? Where would we have to?
What do you mean? What's your question about?
The total amount of money that we can spend on the TIF increment is, is it 10 million?
Uh, TIF, we bring in about $2.5 million annually in TIF revenues, so.
Five years out, or?
So you can bar, on a TIF project, technically, depending on the project and what you're doing, you can have projects that are financed, if they're facilities, you'll, or infrastructure, you'll see 20, 25-year projects in some cases. We do not do that. All of our projects, well, the majority of our projects, I can't say all, are on a, about a 12-year funding basis to be paid off on. All of these are on that type of schedule. I think the, we were looking at some interest-only payments on the Mount, maybe the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge? I can't remember which project was listed that way over the first couple of years. Again, when we, when, when we started working on our financing position as a community back in 2012, we had a lot of backloaded debt that went out to FY '21, '22 timeframe before the, you got to the end of the cliff of all our bond borrowings. TIF is in that same shape, so we have a little bit less resources over the first couple of years, but we have very adequate resources moving forward in the out years.
You guys good? Good? All right. We're up to number seven. Public hearing, consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Agency Street widening project east end. Mr. Mack?
Hello. Next week, you'll have the engineering firm that designed it, V and K, did the design plans on this project here. This is a conceptual map, it was early on in the project, so it doesn't look exactly like it looks like today. I would say 95% of it looks like that. There's a center turn lane for Legacy Drive, and the parking lot to the north where traffic can access it from Agency turning left on it. But this project entails from Roosevelt to Ma Melrose Court, or Montrose Court?
Melrose.
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 Just east of the new Agency, or gas station there. This project is estimated at $1.8 million. With engineering, it takes up, up to about 1.9, so we still have inspection left to do on that. We have decided exactly how we're going to do that project. But this is funded through TIF, and 500,000 of T, of T-SIP, which is Traffic Safety Improvement Funds from the DOT. We will be tearing out the median there, and then doing some lights as well. So this has got a full-fledged traffic control plan, and it also will overlap with some of the construction that's on Agency West. So the way that this construction will be done, they will tear out the medians just adjacent to Roosevelt. There's some medians there. They'll tear that out, and then they'll put asphalt back, send traffic down the middle of it, so they can go and widen it. Fortunately, you're not able to widen it, you have to go to the wider parameters and then work in. And so they'll, they'll tear them out and then put another product back, so they can send traffic down it. They'll do that in one of two sections, and Jason will probably be able to explain this better than I can. There'll be certain driveways that'll be blocked off at certain times. We realize that we can't shut off all access when we're widening. So then we will, will widen on one section, and then turn around and do the next section of widening, and shut the other intersections down. I think the first ones being shut down are Legacy Drive, all these entrances, Hy-Vee's middle entrance, and so then that'll flip, and that'll shut the intersection down, and then the other driveways. So it'll be a lot of coordination here. There's a lot of traffic in these areas for commercial purposes, but luckily, there are other, there are other avenues to access. So once they widen the road, then they'll go back in, and they'll tear up the middle section, and then they'll place it back. And then all new traffic lights are being installed at Columbus and Agency. And then they, it'll be a center turn lane throughout the whole process until it tapers back at the very east end, edge of the boundary. So the, the other thing that's going into play with this project is, we are still not done with Agency on the west side of Roosevelt. If you throw up some of those maps to show what we have left, this traffic control should end as the other part begins. Luckily, we have a little bit of break in weather, so hopefully, we can start working here soon. But you can see, this is the West Burlington Agency intersection, so what we will do is, we'll have them work on the inside lanes first on this intersection, because they don't need to widen the intersections at all. So they'll work on that, and that, so access will be blocked for traffic northbound and southbound. They will not be able to go directly through that intersection. It'll be right in and right out only for this part of the construction. And so then they will flip from the inside lanes, once that's complete, to the outside. This is where traffic is really restricted. Not only are, is northbound, southbound not allowed through those roads, but then right in and right out will also be restricted. There's luckily, there's some frontage roads in these areas. We can't tell traffic to use them because they are private, private frontage roads, but people will find the path of least resistance, rather than, you know, going and using Broadway as their detour or Roosevelt. So this is kind of the, the game plan for this project. This will probably take about two months, where Agency will take about five.
This starts when?
Uh, this project, as soon as the weather breaks, and the contractor feels comfortable going back in there, they will probably start pretty soon. You'll probably see them start doing some sidewalk all the way to the edge. I would hope that they could start doing some of that work now. The driveway at four, I don't know what else to refer to, is the Jimmy John's Perkins driveway. That intersection will be one of the first ones worked on, because as you can tell, there's a little bit of limitation on access for left-hand turns in there, and right-in, right-out. So they'll try and knock that one out first, and then go back to the intersection. So Agency Street will be, not only that, West Burlington is asphalt overlaying from West Burlington Avenue all the way out to here. So we're going to have two and a half solid miles of construction this summer on Agency Street.
Needs to be done. I got a question for you on the east side. Is there any concern on, on staff's part about, because Hy-Vee has kind of effectively moved that traffic point from Columbia to, to further east?
Correct. I do have a map of that. If you want to, you're talking about the east entrance off Melrose at the gas station?
Yeah, because they kind of moved that. So now, I didn't know if there's a concern down the road for traffic because of the turn lane there.
Oh, expanding the turn lane, because, because that's kind of where the taper is.
Right.
I think that the, the biggest thing is, is for right-hand turns, you're going to be able to turn right off onto Melrose, it would be the, it would be the left-hand turn that would be concerning as the taper continues. I mean, we could look at extending that further, but we'd have to end up widening a little further than that.
John brings up a good point, because you're going to have two lanes merging together at that point, plus you're going to have people trying to turn left at that same, and they have really created, that's their main industry.
They have created, yeah, they have created that, that's a new entrance.
In that parking lot at this point, so.
I'm trying to understand what you're saying, two lanes.
Well, people aren't using the Columbia turn as much, because when they put in the convenience store, now they're going further south, or further east, I'm sorry, I got my directions mixed up. So my concern is, if we're tapering there, if we're funneling traffic, and also, there's still going to be people making that left turn. Because they've kind of moved, I didn't know if we've done any look at, if we've looked at it, it looks to me like traffic, I'm there unfortunately all the time, it looks to me like we've moved that turn point, if you're heading east, a little further east, beyond the Columbia.
I would say that the traffic light is probably the people's biggest concern right now, because it, it's not very easy to use. I think the improvements to the traffic light should bring people towards that to try and make that left-hand turns. If you want to, could you bring up, I have a map of what we're doing at that intersection of Columbia, or Columbus.
Yeah, my only concern there, Nick, was whether we're taping it too early.
Yeah.
Because of the traffic flow, because that traffic was kind of changed.
Zoom in on that. Towards the top left.
I only want to do.
I think one of the biggest concerns that I've seen for traffic control is the, is the lack thereof in the parking lot north of Agency. Hy-Vee did a pretty good job of trying to funnel that traffic in their new lanes that they created, but you still have a lot of scattering effect, and then the limits on the amount of stacking that you can have trying to go southbound out of that intersection. And so what we've done is, we've created a, kind of an island similarly to the one that's shaped on the east side of the intersection, further north, to try and bring that traffic that's going eastbound in the parking lot, further north.
Okay.
And trying to allow for a little more stacking.
Stacking, yeah. Okay.
I mean, ideally, we would try and go in there and put a frontage road in there with medians, but, I mean, it's not our property.
Yeah.
But I think this should help at least.
So are you, are you moving a light further east in as well, or we're not adding a light?
No, the lights stay in there. No, we're not adding to any lights either.
Okay.
You guys good?
And any further, like, detailed questions you have, Michael, or, Jason will be here next week.
Could, could you put up the original drawing that you had on there? The entrance off of Columbia, or, to the, to the west.
To the west.
That's east. I'm sorry.
That's what, that's what goes into the gas station.
Go to the west.
To the west.
So that Legacy Drive there, Nick, is that the current configuration, where you're not allowing any left-hand turns?
This is a conceptual map. This is the best map that I could have, that you could throw on the screen all at one time. I have a lot of other maps that have very, that have segments of what it looks like. So that's not the way that it'll look. There'll be a, there'll be left-hand turn access off of Agency to both Legacy and to the north.
Okay.
And you will also be able to turn left out of Legacy, and as well as the, as the parking lot.
Good.
So.
Man, I can't wait till that gets done.
Yeah.
It'll be some headache during the process, but I think it'll be well worth it. but I think it'll be well worth it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Stephanie, come on down. Number eight, public hearing consideration of fiscal year 2018-2019 budget.
So, Eric's gonna put up what was published in the paper last Wednesday, February 21st. This is just showing that the property tax rate's staying the same, what we're gonna certify with the county. Next week, I'll have a PowerPoint presentation to go over general points of the budget. So, any questions?
You guys good?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Okay, now we move to the proposed consent. Number one is resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the 2017 erosion mitigation at the corner of North Street and North Fourth Street. Mr. McGregor? You're excused.
This resolution finals out the project at Fourth and North Street. As you may remember, there was a water, or a rain event that was pretty significant and caused some erosion damage to the hillside of Fourth and North, kind of the corner there. So, what we had done with this project was a soil nail project, where a contractor went in and drilled pipes. It was steel rod, for the lack of, and then they got it into the rock, and then they used a mesh to hold the soil together. The project is done. There's some debate on the sidewalk that is not in compliance right now. But the contractor's not the one to be held at fault, so we will finalize it out with the contractor and have a conversation with the design firm that did that. So, we will try and make that right. But the total project cost was 249,500, paid for out of miscellaneous sewer rehab funds. And I think road use, you know, just for sewer rehab.
Which one, I'm not even paying attention.
Ortho nor.
Not that that's anything new. That is.
Especially when I talk.
Somebody wake up city manager. Somebody wake him up.
There's sewer rehab funds.
You guys good?
And even that, this year, the sewer rehab needs to have a transfer. I see we didn't do a first half transfer on that. I think it was set to do, it might have been, it's either five or 700,000, 500,000 out of the sewer fund. So, it's really being funded out of general sewer revenues.
Just the line item that it came from.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Number two, stay right where you are, my friend, just for a minute. Now, number two, we're gonna, now, I'm just gonna do number two through number nine, and then you can address them, okay?
Okay.
First was resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement for 3,200 Agency Street for the 2018 Agency Street widening project, which are all of these. The second is an easement for 3,120 Agency Street. Number four is an easement for 3,135 Agency Street, all the widening project. Number five is for 3,140 Agency Street. Number six is for 3,150 Agency Street. Number seven is for 3,155 Agency Street. Number eight is for 3,220 Agency Street. And number nine is for 3,245 Agency Street for the 2018 Agency Street widening project east end. Mr. Mack?
Yes, all these easements are for the Agency Street project. As we widen, we need to do a little bit of right away for temporary purposes and for permanent purposes. The memo that you received is incorrect. We are not spending just 2,595 cents. As I was sitting in the back, reading through the material that I obviously published with my name on the top, we have a permanent easement of 540 dollars. The permanent easements and all the information on the dollar figures that are spent are all contained within the easements resolution documentation. So, there's an easement that says the compensation amount, and then it has a description for it. It's the memo that doesn't describe the full dollar figures that we're paying for each one. So, the resolutions, I think, are fine, and all the information behind the resolutions. It's just the memo that doesn't detail out the overall sum that we're paying. So, I don't know the dollar figures that I'm talking around here versus what easement that it is, but it's a total of about 6,500 dollars for easements. And I will have a better detailed answer for you in the packet for next week. That'll be correct.
Okay.
So.
You guys have.
Can't do without it, right?
Correct.
You guys good?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. That brings us to number 10, resolution of support for the workforce housing tax incentive program project by Park West LLC.
This was being submitted by Dan Cahill for his project that was recently discussed, approved, the Park West subdivision. Did have this in the packet, did send to the IDA for a review just to make sure it meets their requirements, and did get some word back that they are currently undergoing some changes for the workforce housing tax credit program. They're not accepting applications currently. They're gonna be changing applications from first serve, first come, first served continuous basis to a competitive one, and the guidelines have not yet been established. So, would recommend probably approval of this, just if it does meet the requirements, once they establish those, they can submit this. But this may have to come back and change if they do drastically change those tax credits. So, just found out about that later Thursday afternoon. So, unfortunately, that was, could delay or change some of the things with our workforce housing tax credits that some developers are wanting to do.
Questions, council?
But I guess for this resolution, again, in general, what the workforce housing tax credit program was for projects that don't exceed 200,000 per unit for new construction, if they build for, within a three-year timeframe, they can qualify for investment tax credit up to 10% of investment directly related to construction based on the first 150,000 dollars of value. Those tax credits are transferable, and then a refund of state sales, service, and use taxes. So, it encourages that moderate-priced home with incentive through the state, which is within the price point, I think, that were desired through that housing study. But we'll see, I guess, where this goes with the state.
Are they gonna go up with the 200,000?
He said the guidelines are being discussed, and they haven't been established, and that was basically.
I'll be interested to see what they look like.
Yeah. So, unfortunately, it just kind of changed right in the middle of his process.
You guys good?
Yes.
All right. Number 11, resolution approving a gift agreement for property located east of 1230 to 1308 North Sixth Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
This is the property located behind those properties at 1203 to 1308 North Sixth. Here, highlighted in yellow, has been owned by Steve Hoth, by Steve Hoth now is in his estate. The city owns the properties adjacent to it, highlighted in black, here and here down to Bluff Road, and then the cemetery is here to the south of it. As they've gone through the state and had some discussions with some local individuals, they've discussed gifting that to the city. This is the site, I guess, of Blackhawk Rock. Kind of through some history research, Russ Frye is kind of the leader of this group that's done a lot of research and written some books on it. But I guess, based on his research, it was a location where Chief Blackhawk stood on that rock overlooking the river and gave one of his final speeches before going into battle.
Just for the record, I stood on that rock, too. So, I just want that known.
Before you went into battle.
No.
The school district, through the high school, they'd done some cleanup on that in the last couple of years during Earth Day, trying to recover the site. This is kind of a historical picture of the site here at the bottom. And then, I know it's hard to see, but this is the rock as it is today, a lot of silting in. And the goal from this program is just to get it recognized through the National Register as the historic rock that they believe it is, going through that process. And then, seeking funds through archaeological groups or researchers to maybe do some excavation to clean up the site. We wouldn't make it a public site until, or if or until access is found to that site. It is a very difficult access site. So, at this time, the only plans would be to try and recognize it and preserve it, and then see if something opens up down the road where access could be given to the site. But we wouldn't allow that, public access at this time until a safe alternative is there.
We could all park in Jim's driveway, right?
The driveway that goes from the curb to the sidewalk.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, you guys good?
Good.
All right, we've got some public hearings set for March 19th. First is consideration of a lease agreement with Des Moines County Humane Society for the use of facility at 2,000 North Roosevelt Avenue. Second is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 parking lot improvements. C is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Mount Pleasant Street HMA overlay. And the last is consideration of a transit grant application. So, we've got that fund coming up. Discussion items, we have, our attorney is here. For the primer on council procedures and laws applicable to council conduct, Mr. O'Connell?
As you know, I'm Patrick O'Connell. I am one of the attorneys at Lynch Dallas PC, who is the city attorney for City of Burlington. And speaking with Mr. Furno, we were working on upgrading the council manual, revising the council manual to include essential items. It's very, very outdated. It still references council members who aren't here, rules that we no longer follow, things that aren't accurate anymore. And while we were doing that, it occurred to us that it would make sense for me to do this, since we do have, I believe, three of you are serving for the first time. Is that right?
Absolutely.
So, there are some issues that I run into all the time, which I thought would be helpful and which are partially included in the handbook you currently have, and which would certainly be included in the new one we are revising. Do any of you have access to the current 2018 municipal leaders handbook, which the League of Cities prepares? Fantastic. My firm edits that every year, we're asked to do that. I would highly recommend that you get it and keep it handy, because it's not gonna give you the answer to everything, but it's definitely gonna give you an excellent initial guidance for most of the issues that come up. At least it'll point you in the right direction, so that you can ask intelligent questions from there. We want to make the rules and procedures manual for the council to be a useful document, rather than an outdated one. And so, we're working toward that. And Jim has mentioned to me, there are several issues that he would like included, which I agree should be included, that are more, I guess I should say, ways to keep the council out of any sort of legal trouble, as well as practical guidance for the council, and as well as basic local rules, which will help us all get along well, be effective, and do the things the right way. First, I want to point out, normally, in cities where the city attorney is present at all of the council meetings, we have, for many reasons over the years, not done that. We, primarily fiscal, we don't have the city attorney present. Normally, the city attorney acts as parliamentarian. In this case, we have a fairly experienced mayor who runs the meetings very efficiently. But your general goal is always to use some form of Robert's Rules of Order, even if you don't adopt it formally. But the one footnote I would give you before you begin is, Robert's Rules of Order is not, including local rules that may incorporate Robert's Rules of Order, are not a death warrant. If you pass an ordinance that is otherwise legal under Iowa law, because I've seen this argument made, but you didn't do it exactly pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order, the mayor didn't recognize someone's objection, someone's point of order, whatever it is, that does not void the law. You look to state law for ordinances and resolutions approving contracts and things like that. So, I would point that out, first of all. I would recommend that the council adopt Robert's Rules of Order as this general guideline, but that we include some substantive exceptions to that, that basically state, the mayor who runs the meeting, or whoever the presiding officer happens to be, if the mayor's not present, will generally follow Robert's Rules of Order. But if there's a good faith error, it's not gonna void an otherwise legal action of the city council. Terms of rule enforcement, it's obviously the mayor's prerogative to run the meeting. The individual who is the presiding officer may run the meeting, and I don't think I've seen this happen here in Burlington before. But we have the right to clear the room, and we have the right to control the room. And we don't need to talk about this this evening, but there are some suggested rules of conduct. There's some pretty good ones, actually, in the existing manual. And I know we've had this discussion before, Your Honor, about what should we do about unruly conduct. But that's one thing to keep in mind, that council members who don't believe the meeting are being controlled can make what's called a point of order and request that the rules be followed. If the mayor doesn't recall, or the mayor, it hasn't occurred to him yet to do anything, there's what's called a point of order. And under Robert's Rules of Order, you would simply state, point of order, I believe the council rules require X. I would ask that that be done. And he might actually appreciate that, if you did, if it hadn't occurred to him that that was going on. There are a lot of procedural rules we could talk about. I don't really want to labor them at length. But oftentimes, not being familiar with Robert's Rules of Order makes it difficult sometimes to get your point across and to do it in an orderly way. And so, what we'll try to do in this manual is provide some pointers on at least the basics, basic rules that are effective, that work well. Let's talk a little bit about the council in general and how it operates through the staff. Especially for those of you that don't have a lot of experience yet in city government. One thing that works very effectively is to work through the city manager and make sure the city manager is in the loop with more or less everything you're trying to accomplish. If you, as an individual, have received a complaint, for example, about the city staff, what works best, in our experience, is that you always, always, always route those complaints of the citizen through the city manager. Because if there is an issue, let's say, Mr. Tisland is off the reservation. He's doing something he shouldn't be doing.
Say it ain't so.
All the time.
You know. Going to Eric and reading him the riot act, and Jim doesn't know about it, is probably gonna create a lot of problems, because Eric actually works for Jim, and it's Jim's responsibility to handle that situation. But it's even more critical with public policy issues. If you have an opinion about a public policy issue that's coming up on the agenda, always bring that to the city manager ahead of time. It will oftentimes, it'll eliminate a lot of train wrecks at the public meeting itself, if you do. And oftentimes, we get so excited, as public servants, we forget. We're excited about an issue, we're ready to talk about it in public, and we don't ask the right questions ahead of the meeting. And if you do, Jim might say, well, hold on a second. Here's something you need to read, and it may change your position entirely. So.
Can you think of an example?
It's a common problem.
Can you think of an example? I'm kind of an example kind of gal.
For example, let's say, for instance, the staff works really hard on an ordinance that they're gonna have, they're gonna pass, and somebody, and they have a lot of information about that. And some citizen approaches you and says, you know, Councilmember Murray, I'm really irritated about this ordinance because, and they give you some reasons. And Jim has got a very detailed understanding of the ordinance. And he understands that those concerns could easily be addressed by looking at section, whatever it is, of the ordinance. What I've seen happen many times, is a council member will take 10 minutes of council time pounding the table about how we shouldn't pass this ordinance, only to have the city manager or the city administrator say, but section 90.26 says that that's not the case, because we can't do that. There's an exception here that covers that person's exact concerns. And now, you've made a table pounding speech that was impassioned, and you actually feel foolish, because the ordinance doesn't really say what you thought it said, or something like that. I've seen that happen numerous times. Or the staff has put before you a policy they want to pass, and it's detailed, and it's got a lot of things in it that are important for you to read very carefully. But you may not understand exactly what it says. You think it means one thing, and the staff says, well, no. The reason we use that language is because there's a history to this, that we've been here for, these guys have been around a while. They remember, and so, they used language from five years ago that references a particular issue that you may not be familiar with. If you ask the city manager ahead of the meeting, If you ask the city manager ahead of the meeting, "This is what I intend to say, here's what I'm concerned about," he might say, "Well, wait a second, here's the reason why that's rooted that way." And you might say, "Oh." I mean, just the other day, I saw a council member who was extremely concerned about the reasons why we were spending a certain amount of money, but he asked, we all had a, I walked into City Hall, and there he was, asking the finance director about it ahead of the meeting, and he ended up not asking any questions about it at all. And it worked, worked out really well. And I, I realize, this may be just common sense, but it's, when we're policy advocates, we forget these things, that the staff often has a grip on details that you need, and sometimes, not everything they know is in the memo. They just have to do their best at trying to summarize for you what they think you're going to think is vitally important.
Can I throw in too, just that it's not good to be sucker punched, and I don't want anybody coming in here trying to sucker punch the city manager, let him know what's going on beforehand, you know? To me, it's, it's just bad business to bring in something at the last minute. You're better off letting somebody know, letting staff know, instead of bringing something at the last minute at a meeting, when Jim, the city manager, doesn't even know anything about it. So, everybody's got time, you can make time to do that. Just had to throw that in there, go ahead.
And I agree with that wholeheartedly, Your Honor, and what I was about to say, size right directly into that, when you're irritated with a staff member, the wrong place to point that out is in the council meeting. Remember, the city staff, they have no power, they work for you, they can't say anything, they're not going to be able to say, "Oh, I did my best," you know, they, they, they're just going to hang their heads and be very upset and embarrassed. And I, I don't, you all seem like extremely nice people who would never do that, but I've seen it many, many times. It's like the council, the staff person's at the microphone, and they're trying to explain why they brought something forward, and they're getting just cross-examined and made to look terrible, "And I think you did a terrible job, and you haven't done your due diligence, and the poor person is standing there, and, 'Well, I'm sorry you feel that way, Councilmember.'" The best way to handle that, if somebody has really goofed up, spent money inappropriately, maybe they went beyond the authority of the, of the policy, that maybe they said something inaccurate in a report, is to bring that to Mr. Furno, and let him discuss it directly. Or, you can even sit down with Mr. Furno and the staff member outside the meeting, and by all means, read him the riot act and get it done, but doing it in a public meeting doesn't go over well. And even politically, it doesn't go over well, and so, I just relating, one of the things I'm, I'm putting in the suggested manual is, is not to do that, and to, and a possible way to deal with staff issues, because you want the material brought forward in an accurate way, it's not personal, and you want to be effective as leaders, and that's the best way to do it. Couple things about the city attorney, all right? I represent the city, I shouldn't say "I," my entire law firm does, I rely on a lot of smart folks, Jim can tell you that, you know, we rely on finance counsel as well, outside Lynch Dallas, but one thing we appreciate, is that if we are, if you are, we are legally adverse to someone out in town, who has retained counsel, what do they always do, right? Do you think they just talk to their lawyer, and then their lawyer calls the city attorney? Oh, no, they call you folks, don't they? They're going to be like, "Councilmember Phillips, I have a problem," and they won't tell you, of course, they have an attorney, and they're already suing us, or they're already threatening to sue us, you know? They won't do that, and they'll want you to get involved and get in the middle of it, and, and what do you do? You, you're like, "I'm a public servant, I have to be responsive, I can't just ignore this person, they're obviously very upset." You take all these notes, and you tell them things, and then you talk to Jim, and Jim says, "We have a lawsuit going on." And that's, what you said is contrary to what the city attorney has advised, and it's contrary to what we're doing in the case, and you're, "Oh." So then you have to go back to them and say, "Listen, never mind what I said, talk to your attorney, and have your attorney call the city attorney."
Why is everybody looking at me?
I picked up you, I apologize.
Thanks for using me as an example, I appreciate it.
It's going to happen to all of you, if it hasn't already, it's just going to happen, and I'm just, and, you know, and, so, the first question I recommend you ask is, "Do you have a lawyer? Are you considering legal action?" You know, who's your attorney? Find out who their attorney is, and say, "Well, listen, because you have an attorney, I tell you what, have your attorney call Pat O'Connell at Lynch Dallas, here's his telephone number, better yet, have him call Jim, and let Jim decide what he wants to do." Because that way, you know, we can all be on the same page, you know? And I, different times, I've even said, you know, "Well, let's, okay, Councilmember Phillips, why don't I come to Burlington, we'll sit down with their attorney and this person, and we'll try to figure out their problem, you know, and we'll bring Jim to the meeting, and we'll just, we'll try to figure this problem out with the attorney present, if they have an attorney." Because it's not really right that they're lawyered up and you're not, it's just, you know, there's a lot of reasons why that's not a good idea. Priority of business, I know that the mayor is well aware of this, but you may not be, your agenda is not, also not a death warrant, okay? You can't put things on the agenda and talk about them if they're not on the agenda, I think you all probably know that, but one thing I would point out, is that it's definitely feasible to reorder the order of the agenda. For example, the mayor looks out in the audience and notices there's three people here from a particular business or something, and they really have something they need to say, and their agenda item is way back in the agenda, and the mayor realizes, "What's going to be two hours at this rate, before we get to them?" He can say, "Look, I'm going to take an item out of order," and that's not improper, you're not violating the open meetings law by changing the order, as long as you're not changing what's on there, by adding something, that's fine. So, just keep that in mind, as I, occasionally, I've seen that happen, where somebody's sitting there until 10 o'clock at night, waiting to talk, and then the council meeting ends, because they say, "We're out of time, and we're just, you know, we have a rule, and we end." Thank you, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't think you were-
That's a gut punch, man.
Yeah, it's a gut punch, and so-
That's Jason sitting back there. We're going to let Jeremy talk first, but anyways.
Remember also, that remarks have to be germane to the item under consideration. What happens every time, right? The train of thought that you have, it's a stream of consciousness, you're thinking about one thing, and the next thing you know, you want to start talking about the budget. Pretty soon, a 10-minute discussion occurs about a budget item-
Break it down, man, break it down.
That's not on the agenda. Who knows what you've just done? Those guys in the press know. They're going to say, "Where was this on the agenda? Why are we having a debate about an item that wasn't on the agenda?" So you have to watch that. It's particularly important when you go into closed session. 21.51(c), matters in litigation, for instance, okay? Those folks in the press, they dutifully walk out, and they know that, that they can't be in here for that, but if they ever find out that you discussed something else, if you wandered off track, they're going to say, "Well, what happened in this closed session?" The reason why we have to record what we say, is because somebody has to be able to see that we didn't violate the law, that we didn't talk about three or four other things. So, if I'm ever in the closed session, I'm going to probably pop up like a little Jack in the Box and say, "Whoa, oh, oh, wait a second, let's stick to what we're talking about." Because you violate Chapter 21 when you go off track.
Now, is that pertaining just to closed sessions, or open sessions too, if you go off?
Both an open session as well.
Okay.
Absolutely, if it's not on the agenda, and this is, this is a good one, when you're in op, I'm glad you pointed, pointed that out, when you're in open session, guess what happens in audience comment, right? The person comes up, and they say, "I live at such and such an address, my name's Mr. Smith, I've got a problem with the sewer in front of my house, nobody ever, they, they never jet the thing, it never works, it's always backing up, I'm really mad about that." And the next thing you know, it's not on the agenda, you've got four or five council members talking policy, "Well, here's what we need to do, we need to go out to that neighborhood, and we need to..." No. No. The public was not given notice that the city was going to discuss what to do about its sewer system, or whether it will spend money to fix the sewer in a particular area of town. That's what the open meetings law is for, so all you can do is smile politely, the mayor might say, "Thank you for your comments, and we will look into it." That's all you can do. That's all you can do, because if it's not-
So it's Shane's job to reel us in when we get off?
If it's squarely within the agenda, you can talk about it. Like if he says, "I noticed tonight, you're talking about the sewer on my street, dah 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 dah." Well, I'm here to say, this is an open meeting, fine. If you talk about it out of order, and you start talking about it then, the mayor might say, "Well, let's wait till we get to it on the agenda," but if he doesn't, you're not violating the law. But you've got to look to the agenda to make sure it's within the scope of what you gave public notice 24 hours in advance, that you were going to discuss. Okay. Because I promised Jim I'd try to be as short as I can, the big issue that I see more of than anything is open meetings violations, because of discussion outside the public meeting. There's a case out of Warren County, there's other cases like it, but the Warren County case is very, very instructive. The Supreme Court did some things in that case that scare every city attorney in the whole state. What happened in the Warren County case is, the city administrator was working on a major project for, actually, it was a county administrator, working on a major project for the county, so what is, what do you imagine she did? She went to each supervisor, in this case, it'd be all of you individually, and spoke to them about, and gave them the information they needed, and had a discussion behind closed doors with each of them individually, thinking, of course, "Well, that's no quorum, I'm not violating the open meetings law." Well, the Supreme Court said, "Remanded, that might just be illegal. We remand for fu, for further fact-finding on what was discussed in those meetings, because we believe there was a rolling, there's a high potential, there was a rolling caucus, and an actual meeting took place, even though they never all sat in the same room together." And why? Because she was passing allegedly, information from one meeting to another meeting, to another meeting, to another meeting, and it was just like Mayor McCambell, you know, it, it'd be just like this, it'd be no different than if Mayor McCambell decided he wanted something done, and he thought something was really important, so he goes to Councilmember Wilson, and he says, "Here's what I think, here's what I think we need to do." And she says, "You know what, I agree, and I'm going to vote yes, you bring that up." So then, Councilmember Wilson, you know, decides, "Well, I'm going to go talk to Councilmember Murray about this." As soon as she opens her mouth, and Councilmember Murray starts responding, a quorum is now involved, and you're having a public discussion that the newspapers cannot evaluate, right? That's the whole point of a public meeting. Now, is it okay for Jim Furno to send you all a memo on something that's coming up with all the information that you need to consider? Absolutely. It's even okay for him to sit down with you one-on-one, but it gets really scary when he does that, because you may, it may be perfectly legal, he may just say, "Look, I don't want you to tell me how you're going to vote, I don't even want you to tell me your opinion, but here's what I got to make sure you understand," and he could do that, okay? But the press doesn't know that, that that's what that discussion was, so I'm just saying, be really, really careful. And, you know, and you're public figures, so if you're sitting in a restaurant, and they see you together, and they think, "What are you guys talking about?" Right? You know that's the case, you know, they come up, and they see you, and they, so, the next thing you know, they see you talking to somebody else, and you're talking about the same subject, because they overheard it, and they think there's an open meetings violation going on. Because in the Warren County case, the really, the bad thing that happened was, they went to the meeting, and there was no discussion, whatever, because they all had it worked out. That's what tipped everybody off, and made everybody suspicious, they walked in, and they were like, "Roll call, please," dum, bum, bum, and it was this major initiative, and there was no discussion of it. It was like some very short comments that were made, but it was fairly obvious that there had been discussion outside the meeting. So much discussion, in fact, a very weighty matter didn't even require four or five sentences out of anybody. So if that happens, you're probably not doing city government right, because you're doing too much of this, talking to each other, ahead of time.
See, I, well, no, I hear what you're saying, you're 100%.
Right.
I just, man, that's just so-
It is, it's difficult.
One time, somebody said, "Well, well, there was no discussion, how come everybody voted one time?" We, we had a vote that went down that way, it wasn't a big deal, but we had a vote that went down that way. Well, we had a lot of discussion, the prior meeting, at the work session, everybody hashed it out.
Which is fine.
Which was a done deal, was a rap.
Yeah, which is fine, absolutely. Because that whole, that's what the work session is for, is to hash out.
I know, and you get conflicting information, you've been told, in the context of time, try to have all your ducks in a row, so you're not asking a ton of questions and prolonging everything, so-
Yes.
So it gets kind of sticky.
Yes. And I, you guys are all highly engaged, and you can tell, but I've seen council members who don't read anything, and they'll spend half an hour of the council time asking all these questions, and, you know, Eric's over there frustrated, and like, "Why am I having to, you know, I sent a memo, did you read my memo?" You know, and, you know, that's, of course, very bad to do also. The city clerk's job, you, you know, Kathleen's job is much more important than it seem, than it may seem, to those of you just observing her, she is not merely a scrivener, she is doing what Iowa code requires. 21.4 requires meeting notices be sent 24 hours in advance, you should respect what this woman is doing, because you have to do it just right, and, and the council agenda, she's doing that for a reason. Also, her minutes are vitally critical, they don't have to say every word that you all utter, but they have to be a reasonable description of what happened at our meetings. And if, if they don't, we're not, we're not following the law, and so, I just want to give a shout out to the state clerk, who works really, really hard to make sure all these things happen. When you get elected to the office, you don't think about the fact that everything you say, she's literally putting that on paper for you, so that there's a record that you said it, and that it was important. Public hearings are an issue that, you know, I'm not sure why, but we're very aggressive with public hearings, we seem to set public hearings for absolutely everything here, out of an abundance of caution, and I've sent memos to Jim before about this one, we really actually don't need to, it's fine if you do. I have a list, which if you'd like, I can put that in the handbook, that has all the ordinances that require-
Oh, yeah.
-public hearings, and all the resolutions that require public hearings.
Yeah, and this goes to council rules and procedure that were adopted in, I don't know what year, and it came to a surprise to most council members when it was brought up a couple of years ago, that there was such a rule and procedure in place. But that's one that requires that, that we buy that set of procedures, that we do the public hearing before all ordinances, but that is not a state requirement.
And really, I would like to put it, put it in the council handbook, because you all are really a gatekeeper as well. If we goofed something up, if we put something forward, and we didn't do a hearing, and you see it on the list, you'll have the handbook, and it'll be a good way to remind you, because anybody can say, "Point of order, Your Honor, I don't think we should do this, because we didn't run the public hearing." You can stop everything and go ahead and do it. So, secondly, here's another issue that I think is lost, it was, it doesn't necessarily occur to even attorneys sometimes, but with a small council like this, we have five council, it's very hard to pass an ordinance if you're down a council person, or a resolution. And I recommend that you never pass, you never approve contracts without a resolution, never do them by motion, because you want to have a record of council action stapled to that contract in the city's files, so that we don't have to go hunting through Kathleen's minutes to find out who voted when, and whatever it was, will be approved a contract that's come and due. You know, because Eric will bring me a contract to say, "This thing's come and due, I need you to review it, we, we don't like it anymore, we'd like to change it, we need this added, this added." You know, and it'd be so much easier if there's always a resolution stapled to it. So, the reason I bring that up is because, obviously, if I have my way, the council will never pass another contract again without a resolution. But ordinances and resolutions require a majority of the entire council. So, what's a majority? If you have three, you have a quorum, right? But two to one isn't going to pass an ordinance, is it? So if you've got the third reading of an ordinance that you really do want to pass, come up, think about that. You've only got three council members, it isn't going to pass unless all three of you vote yea, because that's the majority of the entire council. You know, and, and motions, you can pass those all day long with three, two to one. State law will not allow you to pass a resolution or an ordinance without a majority of the entire city council voting yea. And I've, I've seen people forget that before.
Where?
"Now, wait a second, the ordinance fails, because we didn't have a full complement on board." Now, I know, I know your wheels are turning, okay, strategically then, if I need something passed, you know, I got to wait until Smith to be gone, you know? Talked about rolling caucuses, I'm trying to pick out what I think is absolutely vital from the manual that I was working on, I've been working on it quite a bit. Couple of things, if you are wanting something added to the agenda as a council person, I don't think there's any way a city can function appropriately if a city council member doesn't have the ability to put something on the agenda. The city staff sometimes thinks, "Oh, my gosh, we can't put anything else on, we've got all this other stuff planned, we don't have time," but you have a right to put it on the agenda, if you need it on the agenda. If you do that, I'm going to recommend that we adopt a policy that you copy all your colleagues when you do that, and put, "Do not reply." Everybody know why, right? Electronic meetings are also meetings, so, that's a good point, time to point out, when the staff or Mr. Furno sends you all council updates on things, never reply. If you reply directly to Jim, that's fine, okay? "I got it," or, "Can I confirm the meeting time?" But don't engage in discussion over an email. The second you all, especially if you reply all, you've got an instant meetings violation. And of course, if they make an open meetings, open records request for all the emails between Jim and the council, they'll find out about that, won't they? And they'll say, "Whoa," you know, and oftentimes, there's no damages, there's nothing that, you know, but they're going to point it out, they're going to point it out, because it's their job, they're the press, and they, they watch us, so, and we shouldn't do it.
The Hawkeyes over there.
Yeah, they are too.
Um, motions, this is the last thing I'm gonna talk about. Uh, there are a lot of motions that you folks can raise, um, that... People don't understand motions very well. How many of you think that you just move to table this if you don't wanna talk about it right now? Everybody's probably thought about that or done it at one point or another, right? That might not be the quite what you mean, okay? If you're going to table something, it's, it's just dead until somebody makes a motion to bring it from the table. So if really what you mean is, "We need another month to study this issue." Say, "I would like to move to postpone consideration of this matter until our meeting on..." And figure out the calendar and say the date of the calendar dates you'd like to move it to. Post-motion to postpone is different from motion to lay down the table. And a couple of other things, I would hate to think this would ever happen, but sometimes people run on and on and on, right? And it's like, you're looking at the clock like you probably are now. It is acceptable, although not always polite, to move to end question. If two-thirds of you vote, move the, move the question, if, 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 let's just say, for the sake of argument, that the mayor says, "I, I moved the previous question on this." And there's a second, and three of you vote yes on that, debate ends. And movement, motion to, motion to end debate does not have any debate of itself.
That's not two-thirds.
So it's just gonna be, yeah, that's right, you're gonna need four to end debate. I guess that's right. In Burlington, you're gonna need four. So, um, it's not that useful here because all you need is two dissenters and it's gonna keep carrying on.
So, I'd use that if somebody in the audience or one of us is just getting really...
Well, the mayor can control the audience. The mayor can just say, "Listen, we, thank you, but you're done."
So we get to squabbling too lengthy ourselves and then somebody can say, "Okay, got it."
Correct. You know, and I've seen this work in cases where there's one person who is just hijacked this discussion to this point.
Hey, have you seen that a lot?
Yes. I saw it, I see it in one particular city twice now, the last two meetings in a row.
Really?
Yeah, the person just kept bringing it up and bringing it up and they, they were just like, "I'm tired of this. Your Honor, what can I do?" And the mayor says, "Well, you can move the question." "What do you mean? Move to end debate." So he did, and then there was a second and there was two-thirds voting yes. Bang, you guys, they were done. So if you happen to know any individual, and I'm not saying any of you would ever be that.
Can we do that to the city manager? Just for clarification, can I do that to Jim Furno?
All right, I just wanted to...
You can just tell me to shut up.
Jim. Uh, just remember, any type of, any type of motion like that is gonna require any motion to limit debate to a certain timeframe or whatever's gonna require interference with that. That's about all I had. Are there any questions about anything I talked about? We can have another discussion too. I, I'm, I'm working on a draft of, of upgrade of the existing council handbook, which will have a lot of that stuff from the municipal leaders handbook in it as well. And when you get it, when you all get it to review and discuss, we can have another discussion if you would like. Especially if you have thoughts about what should be included that isn't in it.
You covered the good stuff tonight, Patrick.
This was great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're good, Jim? Anything you wanna add on that? All right. Make sure we document the time. I wanna know how long he's charging us. Thank you, Patrick. All right.
We got the ride back to cover too.
Number two, our treasurer's report. Annette, come on down. I was gonna bump up Jason Hutchinson before Annette, but I just thought, "I'm not going to do it tonight."
So, January's treasurer's report is in the packet. Um, everything's going along great. There's the normal things, there are just timing issues, like our internal service funds and our Maslow project is, draws on our SRF loan and things like that. Um, other than that, I, the revenue expenditures are in line with what we would expect them to be at this point. So if anybody has any questions?
I didn't see anything.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Annette, class of 87. We appreciate you. Okay, long-term economic development strategy. Jeremy Hess. And Jason Hutchinson, come on in.
Sure, thank you.
This is gonna be a long one.
This is gonna be a long one.
This can be a long one.
Good evening, council. My name is Jeremy Hess. I'm the Director of Economic Development Vision at the Greater Burlington Partnership. And I'll be joined here with my fellow leader, Jason Hutchinson. Uh, we were asked to come and give a brief overview of economic development or efforts and our strategy going forward. And so, just wanna thank you for the opportunity to come before you and talk about economic development. Would ask that you please hold all difficult and controversial questions until Jason... Or you can move to question or whatever. You can do that right now if you like. So, let's see, I'm gonna figure this thing out. There we go, cool. All right, so, economic development, I wanna talk a little bit about just kind of what it is. Everyone has a different idea of, of what economic development means or what it is. And so, we wanted you to know what economic development means to us at the Greater Burlington Partnership and what we're focused on. Um, so first, let's just talk about the what, and the what in economic development are the, the priorities. Number one priority is jobs. Um, I hope you all agree that any job is better than no job. Um, but when we talk about jobs, we're talking about the jobs. Talking about the kinda jobs that you can raise a family on, you can live your life here in Burlington, Iowa. You can live the American dream. Um, we're talking about primary sector jobs. When we talk about what we're focused on, primary sector jobs, we're not talking about retail. We're not talking about restaurants. There's nothing wrong with restaurants and retail jobs. There's nothing wrong with those, but we're talking about primary sector jobs. And when we say that, we're talking about those who export dollars into our community and then export a product or a service. So, uh, that is our, my number one goal. That is what our organization has always had as a number one goal, is jobs. And along with that, just as important is investment in growing the tax base. That is our goal. Not, do not misunderstand me, it's not higher taxes that we're about. We're about growing the tax base. And so, we wanna make sure that the wealth, um, that, uh, is available, that it's not going anywhere else but our town. We want to see as much of it come here as possible. Um, and so that happens through a tax-based investment. We're talking about, um, moving a, a, a field that has been, had a taxable value of, of $300 or whatever it was for the city and, because it sat there as agricultural or just empty. We'd like to see a $150 million investment on that piece of ground and that's how we're growing the tax base. So, um, those are our focuses for handling those two things. And so, one question might be, um, how have we done? And how do we measure it and how do we look at these things? So we've gone back in our results tracker for the last 10 years and looked at how we've, how we've done in these two categories. And in the last decade, we've seen job creation of 1,516 jobs. And we've spent $300, or $347 million, uh, in investments. And so, remember, when we talk about jobs like this, it may not necessarily be net, um, but we are talking... So in that last decade, there have been companies that have closed their doors and we've seen jobs go away. Um, we've seen new companies come along and new jobs be added. Again, we're talking about primary sector jobs. Um, we're not talking about retail in here, so we're not talking about restaurants. We're not talking about, um, we, these are, um, these numbers come from what we would classify as a project. Um, if Shears, uh, wants to put in $2 million worth of new microwave ovens and add 22 positions to their line, um, and they had the confidence to pull the trigger on that because we were able to point them towards Align Energy rebates or economic development incentives at the state level or whatever, and they move forward with that, we're gonna count that. These are things that we've had some involvement in. And listen, I recognize that Jeremy Hess or the economic development, I don't create one job. I don't create any investment. None of these things are coming out of my pocket necessarily. These are private company investments and they're making the jobs and they're, they're putting out the dollars. Um, but we do have a role to play in that. So if those two things are the what, jobs and growing the tax base, I just wanted to talk briefly about how we do this or how we go about this. Um, one important thing is business attraction. Um, we spend a lot of time pursuing every industry. Um, we pursue site selectors. Uh, we hound businesses about their supply chains. We find out who it is that supplies the parts, the nuts and bolts to the cases and the siligans of this world, and we pursue them. We try and convince them to come and move to Burlington and set up shop right next door. Um, we put together for business attraction, we, we put together proposals, uh, requests for proposals and so forth, um, that are assembled with excellence, that have every question imaginable.
Did you say that, that are assembled with excellence?
Yes.
I like that, my friend. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, okay. Good, good. But I guess the point is, is that when it comes to business attraction, uh, everybody thinks their town's the greatest town. We can't just put up a sign up somewhere and they'll all just flock here. These things have to be pursued and, and, and we show, um, we show them the answers really before they ask the question. Let's talk about business retention. It's another area of how we do and go about economic development. Um, I don't know if, if this is, is borne out in our, uh, area or not, but the statistics nationwide, that 80% of the growth is gonna come from the folks who are already here in our communities. So part of our job goals and how we do this is that we have a relationship with every single plant manager, every business that we can possibly do so that we want to know how they're doing. We want to forestall or, or sidestep any issues if, if, if they're thinking about closing or they're thinking about shrinking. Is there ways that we can maneuver and find some things to keep that, uh, the business from, from, from going away or shrinking? Um, another section or another way that we go about the how in this is real estate and site development. Um, as I said earlier, we can't just put up a sign. Um, we have to have development-ready sites that we control, that we know. It needs to be known about those sites and we have to have those ready. If we have no inventory, uh, it's hard to even get into the game of, of being able to pursue uh, some of these firms that are looking to relocate or expand or grow. Another area that we spend, uh, our time on and dollars on is entrepreneurship development. This is a tough one. Um, the goal here is to take the entrepreneurial spirit in this town and grow it. I don't know how some towns, towns just seem to have a knack for it, whether it's Iowa City or Fairfield, uh, but we'd like to see that happen here. We'd like to see more of the wine guards, uh, people starting in their garage or the KPIs, um, and find those folks that have a great idea and help them and grow them um, so that they might be an, an economic engine and an employer in our, in our town. Another area that we put a lot of effort into is talent attraction and workforce development. Jason's gonna talk about workforce, uh, talent attraction portion of it, but, you know, a lot of this sometimes gets to be the chicken or the egg. We don't know, um, you know, which needs to happen first. So, right now, our labor market is very tight. I don't know exactly what our unemployment rate is, but it's, it's, it's in the mid-3s or maybe the low 3-point-something percent, but it's tight out there. I think if you went and talked to most HR managers in our community, they would tell you that they have multiple openings and confident personnel. And so, it makes, uh, business attraction more difficult if that company's doing due diligence and they get on the phone, they talk to four other HR managers who are all ready to leave town and never look back because their job is very, very difficult right now. Uh, that makes business attraction even that more difficult. So, there's a great deal of effort and time put into workforce development. These are working with the schools, uh, putting schools and businesses together along with community college. And one of the things that we need to do to move our kids from, from school to, to work as fast as possible, it's apprenticeships, it's, it's all kinds of things like that. So it's just, um, it's a, it's a, it's a tough balance to walk. And, uh, moving on here, I wanted to talk just a little bit about one of the things that we do at the, at the partnership and economic development and site selection process. Um, and, and just for the record, uh, I'll have you know, I'm new in this position, only been in this job for almost one year. Um, and I can tell you that there currently, there are more, there's more activity, there are more proposals that are out there on my board, um, that I, in the last month than I've seen in the last six or seven months combined. Um, so something is, 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 is changing or there's been an uptick in activity. And most of these companies that are evaluating Burlington are asking if there's any interest here at all. Use what's called a site selector. There are people who are hired who, who, um, essentially, um, I'll get to the, it's actually second point, is that they are hired to eliminate as many people as quickly as possible. That's kinda their goal. Um, competition is high for, um, for these kinds of projects out there. Uh, you guys gotta know that. You gotta know that the town, 50 miles up the road, wants, uh, one of these projects to land here just as bad or worse than you. Um, and so, out of 250 people that are, are towns that are putting forth proposals, the job of the site selector is to quickly get that list to as small as possible. And so they're looking for any reason to cut, uh, your town. The thing that matters in, uh, in site selection that we and you, as we partner together, have a lot to do with, whether it's the, the economics, they, they'll look at the economics, does it make sense for them to locate here? What kind of a business climate does Burlington have? Are they pro-business or are they friendly towards business? How are we doing on infrastructure? Are we looking towards the future or behind? Um, they'll look at all of those things and all of those things matter. Um, but the key to, uh, the site selector's heart or whatever is to, um, is risk reduction. They want to know that what we say we're gonna do, we can deliver on, that every possible scenario that they can think of that make our town a problem for this project or for that site, uh, location has been, um, handled. And so, in the past, I, I would just point to my predecessor, uh, Mr. Toyer, who did an excellent job along with some of you here on council and other people, uh, in this room, that when, when the Silgan location, uh, took a look at Burlington, when they showed up for a site visit, they didn't just show up and, you know, uh, take them out and, take them out to a nice dinner and try and ply them with alcohol or whatever. They showed up, uh, and they had, uh, every department from the city here. They had the wastewater treatment guys, they had the water treatment guys, they had the city engineers, they had the code enforcement people there. So when that site selector showed up and they started firing questions, we had answers. Um, and this is the, the, the level of excellence that we wanna, uh, continue with as we, uh, move forward in the future. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to my, my boss.
All right, thanks, Jeremy. Uh, Jason Hutchinson. We can't have a talk about economic development without at least, uh, without at least this... Uh, and I know that trash cans can be very controversial, but so can incentives. And you'll, uh, know that especially when there's a, a project underway and you hear about that. And I would say there are no easy solutions, uh, to that, but I think a lot of times incentives get, uh, uh, there are misconceptions out there in the general public about incentives. Who wants anything gets it, and, and that's, that's not the case. In fact, we, we actually use incentives very rarely. Uh, they aren't used that often. And, and when they are, it's, it's designed to be specific and strategic about encouraging a specific type of investment or, or, and not all jobs are incentivized, but typically there's some sort of a threshold in terms of the wage that's paid and the benefits paid to those in, in which an incentive gets, uh, gets attached to it. But then there's also an accountability piece. Uh, there's also a, a, a thought that incentives just get awarded, companies get a big, a big check and then, uh, and then that's it. They cash the check and then they don't create the jobs. Or when, uh, a, a month after a job's created, they decide to fire that individual. And that's not the case. Now, these things do go by headcount, so you might encounter, uh, thoughts from citizens that say, "I was hired and then I was let go and they still got the money." But what we talk about is total headcount. It, it, it matters less what the social security up, number is of the person doing that job and more, what's the total level of employment? Because people are always gonna come in and out of an organization. So I would tell you that of all the things in my job, wrestling with this concept of incentives is the thing that takes up the most bandwidth up here. And we're very cautious in coming to you and proposing, uh, those things because they're, they're not easy to do. And I would say it is important to have public feedback on that because the public does help keep us in check and keep us accountable on those things. Just some future ideas to float out there when it relates to economic development, or inventory in industrial land. inventory in industrial land. And you can take industrial to mean manufacturing, you can take industrial to also mean office. It's just in general, the inventory for space for primary sector companies. Flint Ridge Business Park was a great project that was christened a little over 25 years ago, and that started out at 115 acres, definitely under 100 acres right now. And so two-thirds of that, more than two-thirds of that is, is, has been developed. And so as we look for increasing our industrial capacity in the future, unfortunately, infrastructure has risen in costs fairly dramatically since the early 90s. And so we're trying to be very strategic. I don't think you're going to see another 300-acre industrial park pop up in and around our community. I think the cost of land acquisition, the cost of infrastructure are probably going to be too significant for that. And so what we're looking at is perhaps a smaller parcel development and those sorts of things that we can take from existing infrastructure and have those extension costs be as minimal as possible. Third thing to the future is the, the expansion of Highway 61 and 34. Right now, it's likely that Highway 61 is going to be completed four-lane all the way through by 2029. That's a long way off. Hopefully, we can move up that timeframe. But the good news is, it's on the radar. That hadn't always been the case. In fact, before the gas tax was passed, we had no real clear idea of when that might happen. We were clearly committed to making that happen. We've learned we can't influence politics across the river in Illinois. I don't know when 34 is going to be done, but I'll tell you, it'll be, it would be very helpful when that, when that would happen, because anytime trucks touch a two-lane road or their, their speed is interrupted, their consistent traffic is interrupted, that increases the cost of transportation. And a lot of times, RFPs that we receive, the, the companies will want to have a certain mile radius of an interstate system. And although we may be outside of those parameters from an interstate radius, we can sometimes argue that if we've got a divided four-lane highway without stoplights, that that is just as good as an interstate. We have done pretty far. All the communities have signed a pact saying they're not going to put stoplights on there until really you reach that, the school in, in the DuBoisian area, and that's been pretty helpful. We'd certainly like to see that going, going east as well. And then last thing, Jeremy, already mentioned it, but talent attraction. We are, we're currently limited in our community by our capacity to do economic development deals for the reason of talent acquisition and, and talent development here. And as proof of that, what I would offer is, is a job, a bank, s e iowajobs.com. You can go on there at any point in time and click on Iowa Workforce Development, and you're going to see in real-time updates on jobs on that site. As of October 11th, there are 1,000 advertised job openings. So that does not include the company that might hire folks but hasn't advertised it yet. These are advertised listings. And oftentimes, what I hear when I use that number is, "Well, these are all minimum wage jobs. Isn't that wonderful that we have 1,000 minimum wage jobs open?" And I will tell you, just, and I, I didn't selectively pick this. All I did was click on the website that, that today at the top of that, and you can see superintendent, management, there's a medical job there, quality control manager. So while there certainly would be some minimum wage jobs in this 1,000 pool, there are also many jobs that pay significantly more than that listed in this. And this is not just Burlington, West Burlington. This is our leadership area. Driving commute from, from our community is, is included in that. But we've got to get really serious as a community about attracting talent and then developing talent within, because that, that 1,000 number has been pretty consistent for a period of time. And I will tell you, we need HR people to be our advocates in companies that are creating new jobs. And right now, some of them are saying, "Please, don't send any new jobs here because I already can't fill the ones that we have." And what, we should never lose a job opportunity because we can't fill it. What, that's a horrible reason to not have economic development deals happen here. Last things to consider, and then I'll, I'll leave you for the evening, but it's important for us to be careful on confronting our challenges. Jeremy talked about risk reduction and how that is really important. I got into this business thinking the bottom line is the only thing that mattered. And while the bottom line is important, people, humans, make decisions on where to put corporate investment, and we can be risk averse when it's our tail on the line making recommendations. It's important for those folks making the decisions to know that as a community, we're proactively tackling our challenges. And, you know, perceptions related to, to crime, our, our aging infrastructure is a concern. The debt that the city has certainly is a concern. And so all those things, I, I think are a great strategy to be put in place to tackle that. But I would say, we shouldn't just shy away from problems because they're, they're difficult. In fact, it's important for us to be visible on those things. There are some existing incentive programs out there I think that would be helpful to review, and I, I know that we intend to meet with the Sales Tax Economic Development Group and Committee that you have as, as a city committee. There's a sales tax economic development on that for a long time. The city's not funding that to the degree that it, it had in the past, and, and so I think we want to be fairly particular about some parameters for accessing those dollars because economic development can mean lots of things to lots of people, and perhaps it'd be wise to narrow in that focus a little bit for those limited dollars. Housing is something I would like to talk about. When we talk about talent and when we talk about the wealth of a community, housing is so important around that. We know demographics, if we just look at demographics, we know that we're getting older, and we know that as we skew older, we're probably likely to move from earned income to fixed income, and that will have an impact on the wealth of our community. And so, of course, if it's me putting the lens on, I hope that every decision that you consider in the future, it's in the minds of, will this help us attract working families to our community or not? When we think about the talent development and the, the number of unfilled positions out there, this becomes pretty important. And people vote with their, they vote with their feet on where to go. And housing is important. Stories every day of people accepting employment in our community, but, but perhaps living elsewhere or having long commutes. And so, supply of housing units is, it's just, it's pretty darn important. And we're, we're not in an island, we're competing globally for talent, and, and everyone's got to have a place to live. And so I'm going to keep pushing you on, on housing to have a, a, a strong strategy as a community for how we're going to get that, because we work really, really hard on economic development deals. And if we don't also follow that up with housing, then we're not capturing the entire piece of the pie that we would like to do, because at the end of the day, we want those people in our community so that they can pay taxes here and help add to the tax base here. All right. Good night for your presentation tonight, by the way. This does not mean that you can never have disagreement. But when we talk about risk reduction, it's, it's pretty important for the business community when they're taking a look at where to have a long-term investment, that they're stable and predictable government. Government agencies get along with one another, they work with one another, and council has, the bodies have vision for the, the future and approach problems in a very predictable manner. May not always know the outcome, but that they at least approach problems with a process in a predictable manner. And then finally, I, I know budgets are always tough, but we must think about ongoing investment of quality in life initiatives. We can always delay things for a few years, but delaying for decades would be problematic. And so I, I'm not suggesting that we've done that here, but I just want to put that in front of you as we talk about talent attraction, that we can't forget about those things either. So this is not really some grand plan that we unveiled for you tonight. We are working on our new five-year plan of work, our five-year strategy governing 2019 to 2023 in terms of how the project is going to evolve. But I at least wanted to lay the groundwork and give you some, some nuggets to chew on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have questions? I'll tell you what, if the next five years is anything like the last five, we'll be doing pretty good.
Thanks.
All right. So if it's not, I'm going to blame Jeremy. All right. Good job, guys. Does anybody have any problems with appointments?
Well, it was a little confusing. The headline was for low rent housing, but the application was for animal control board.
It was a prior, it was a prior application that I told her she didn't.
Okay.
I didn't see any issue with it.
Okay. All right, then. Mr. Tisland, before you go off the reservations, you had to make sure that...
Just one thing, I think you might have been emailed on, just the state historic tax credits. That's being considered as reducing and eliminating over time by July 2025. That's been critical in the redevelopment of a lot of buildings downtown, so I think that's being discussed and has been discussed, so I'd urge you to contact legislatures on that and advocate for that as much as we can, because we have a lot of buildings that, if they're not redeveloped at some point, then we're looking at demolition or, it's a lot of cost for ten, for the, for those over time if someone walks away from them. So, that's it.
Okay. Counselor, speak up.
Went to a wonderful concert last weekend at the Capitol, and if you weren't there, you really missed out. It was country western, a lot of local talent. In fact, there was a gal that started everybody off, Megan Smith. She cosigned in 26 years, so there was some, there was some talent on the stage. There's a, a nice book signing coming up at Burlington by the book this Saturday, and it escapes me, it's a native Burlingtonian, is returning back, and she'll be signing her book, and I intend to be there. Sounds really good.
Counselor, Mr. Phillips.
Free chat. You might hear about it on the radio. We've got a bunch of dead fish down at the marina, freshly frozen dead fish, but eventually they're going to start stinking up the joint, so...
He's actually eating it. His wife hasn't figured out it's not sushi yet.
Please, please come get some free fish, all you fishermen.
Thanks.
All right. I just have, I just want to give my condolences to the, the Clegg family and also to the Heinole family as well. Also, just want to, this is where, since we're done with budget season, I'm going to be ramping up this next month and a half, so if there are any teachers that want me to come and do a review before, before I shut it off again, now's the time, so I'm taking all comers. Call Kathleen Salisbury or Katie Music, and they'll be, they'll be able to get it set up, so.
I've got nothing today.
What? Oh, think about it.
It's in my throat.
Okay. Counselor, Mr. Enker.
I have nothing.
James, talk back to America.
Backfill is up for discussion. Actually, the, it is scheduled for a subcommittee meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock. The bill that is as currently written would cut a third of that next year. The general fund, that would be 115,000, would cut another third the following year and none. So it's two-year, a two-year phase out. If that were to go through as it is currently being addressed, this is at the same time that we're talking already about being in a financially stressed position, especially that second year and the end of the third year out. So making sure your voice is heard and understanding what, what kind of impact this can have on us locally is tremendous. Flood wall. I do have something, Nick. I'm going to, I'm putting you on the spot. I heard something about, didn't you say about... What, in regards to the flood wall, where are things at and what are our abilities to meet the needs for steamboat days this year?
Oh, gotcha. We're on schedule currently, but that could change within a minute. The schedule on the contract, there was some extra working days because of the, the switch in the form liners due to the, on that special date deadline. But that does push that working day deadline to 6/12, which is three days before, or two days before their first concert. That wouldn't work. I mean, we would have to try and accommodate to a certain level. I know that has been published that they have what, quote, "the green light," or that we are willing to work with the final stages. That's true, but the final stages have not been defined on what, what we are willing to do. I'm not going to completely halt the project if it's not at its final stages. And they, Steamboat Days is well aware of my stance on this project. It could be set off by a, you know, the river level shot up here in the last week, up to about 14 foot. I would be concerned that some of the contractors would start pulling materials, and that could greatly delay us getting it done on time. But we should be able to have steamboat days, I mean, all assuming that the, the schedule goes forward as is, but it will be dialed back. I, we haven't had some of those in-depth conversations yet, so it's what I mean, it's why on that moment of, of that conversation. I think the next month will be pretty telling on where we will be at that moment, just because there's a lot of concrete work that has to happen in between then, and once that concrete work is done, we should be able to operate even if there is some sort of a smaller level of flood threat. If we can pull 500-year flood, we should be able to sustain to at least 20-foot level.
So I just wanted to make sure there is a clarification in, in terms of what we've been able to, what we are able to provide based off of what I've seen in the paper. Just want to make sure that we do know we're doing everything that we can, but there are no guarantees when you're in the middle of a project.
Water's going down, though, now you're...
Yeah, you'll be low 12 by Sunday, but...
Yeah, you'll be fine now.
Until we get all the rains this March.
And I noticed there's been discussions about parking. You know, our parking fund has brought in, this is kind of, this is 2012. Our parking fund sat with a $253,000 deficit, and we were bringing in $57,000 of revenue in 2012, and our expenditures that year were $72,000. We were, we were doing a great job of having a system set up to maximize loss, and it just accumulated and was part of an overall process of having deficits in a multitude of areas. The money that we spent in the parking, we kind of talked about the meeting, and in the meantime, from what I've seen, Vicky's position and what she does with making sure that we have parking enforcement occur in the downtown area is covered out of that. We also do basic maintenance of the facility, cleaning, the property maintenance has to go through, lights, and do just, you know, just basic upkeeps. And that is what, when you look at our expenditures, anywhere from 60,000 to 80,000, depending on how much property maintenance expenditures occur, that is the basic cost in maintaining our parking system, how we, how we currently operate. 2013 into 14, we did a significant increase in what our parking rates were for leased spaces. That was enough to get us up over the hump so that we weren't operating at a deficit out, out of that fund, and it created a little bit of positive cash flow. Here's $180,000 over into that fund to get rid of the deficits that had accumulated over a number of years. You know, absent, if, if there hadn't been a 200 and, what grew by the end of, actually by the end of 2012, it was 270,000 in deficit. Had to deal with that kind of a deficit in that account, we'd have been able to, that fund wouldn't be providing like a, a significant amount to do towards capital improvements to the, to the parking lots, but it would be contributing some, at least to help pay for those type of improvements with the recently happened place. What's happened there? When you have deficits in accounts, you end up collecting money with no, for, with no benefit that you get to see. And that's what we've dealt with over the course of the last five years, not just here, it's in a lot of different places. And, and you just have to remember that that's kind of what the position seems to be. I don't know if that clears up things...
No, I appreciate it. I'm glad you brought that up.
But I do, just based off of what I read in the article and knowing how some of the conversations have gone, I just wanted to try to make sure that there's a little bit more out there to give some context, especially for people who haven't been a part of this process over the course of the last few years.
Thank you.
And that's it for what I have.
And that's it for what I have.
So, Wednesday and Thursday of last week, Linda and I attended the legislative forum for Southeast Iowa Days in Des Moines with Nick McGregor. There's a lot of great information out there. We, we were able to meet the economic development director for the state of Iowa, several lobbyists, different people that are working in our area. There's a lot of people pulling for us and, and pushing to make sure that we can improve our community. And then on Friday, I went up to Davenport with Charlie Nichols and Matt Ammann, the city nuisance and rental inspector. And we sat down with their rental and nuisance team and spent the whole day of learning about what they do and trying to figure out what we better. One thing we talked about up there was parking. And they've adopted a few things and bought some programs and, and made some, some minor investment, capital investment into their procedures. And over, over the last couple of years, they've actually seen an increase in their overall revenue. And now they're profitable. They're making money in their parking programs. And there's a lot of things that we can do that would just make them more efficient. Rental programs that they have. And we're going to be probably traveling to other communities. I think Dubuque is one that we're working to get to. I think Atum was on the list. So, as we move forward, we've got a lot of great information to bring, bring forward. So, just want to bring that up.
Good deal. Anything you want to share from the?
I got cut short unfortunately because the weather was not cooperative. So, right when we got to the questions for the cities, they said we're calling in unfortunately. But it was a good opportunity to network with your legislators, elected officials, and get your questions answered. And to contact your elected officials about the, the backfill historic tax credits, please, please do so. Because it could be some nasty stuff coming down the pipes if it doesn't go in our way.
Have we sent, have we sent a, a letter about the historic tax credits? I thought we discussed that once before. Have we sent one as a city?
We did. That was federal. Those ended up not being cut during their process.
Okay. Patrick O, he ain't heavy, but he's my attorney. You got anything you want to close out with?
No, thanks.
We're good to go? Okay, then. Just means adjourned. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, everybody. Good night.